First is approval, we have trouble with 16 minutes. I was not here, but the three of you were, so we can still approve it. Anybody have any comments or?
I'd move we approve him as submitted. I didn't see anything.
All right, all the favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, first up then is the Flagstar, pretty state of Ohio savings. Is there somebody here? Grab one of those chairs and hold on now. Good evening.
Hi.
Get your names for us. Brad, Chris. It's a quick question for us. So Flagstar, is Ohio savings becoming Flagstar or is it changed? Like is this a different? Sorry, that's their box.
Yeah, I believe so.
Alright, we've got some comments from the planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report dated November 10th regarding unit 46. As you were just talking with the applicant, this was previously Ohio Savings Bank. Again, unit 46, which is a corner unit. There's four signs being proposed and all four will replace the existing Ohio savings sign. So it's essentially like for like in terms of the number. Sizes are a little bit different, but no issue as it relates to that. The combined total of the four signs, 118.74 square feet. And by code, because it's a, it's corner unit, secondary frontage is permitted additional area. So the total is 175 square feet that's permissible. That's 125 for the primary frontage and 50 for the secondary. So relative to sign area, there's no issue. Just a few items I noted that need confirmation or correction as it relates to the Macedonia Commons Sign Criteria. Maximum height of signs for miscellaneous stores is 36 inches, three feet. In this instance, the symbol portion of the sign exceeds the three foot limitation. It's about 3.33 feet. That would need to be revised to a maximum of three feet. The sign, the side returns and trim caps, I didn't identify the color on there. The plan wasn't really necessarily legible, so just need to confirm that those reflect compliance with the dark bronze that's required by the Commons Criteria. And then there's some colors, yellow and then of course, black. And so colors can be chosen under the revisions to the Commons Criteria. And of course, the planning commission also recognized that in their sign code update that they had a few years back. So just need approval from the commission for that, those sign colors. And then two other just technical issues. The signs shall project a maximum of 12 inches from the face of the building. Five inches for the max on the, for the letter can and the raceway, seven inches. Just the plan needs to reflect compliance with that. And then the bottom of the sign shall be 15 inches from the bottom of the fascia sign band. Just need to confirm compliance with that. Most of these are, you know, just not that significant issues. I think it could be approved as submitted, just with, I'd say the exception, need to confirm the colors and then confirm that the applicant is reducing the height of the symbol to three feet or less.
So, what are your suggestions?
Yeah, so we have eight, George, any eight sets of drawings?
Okay.
So I think we've changed everything as it relates to all of the items noted to comply with all of the Macedonia criteria as it relates to the colors, sizes, heights, spacing from the bottom of the fascia, the depth of the letter with the raceway. Those have all been identified. Colors on the returns and the trim caps. They just elected to go with a smaller.
I have a question.
Stock instead of letters.
Oh, is Flagstar their color sort of yellow? Is that, is that sort of their symbol for?
Yeah, yes.
Their banks everywhere?
Yes.
That was my question.
How does the black lettering show weight at night?
It's a perforated material. Yeah.
I guess, sorry, I was past that stuff where I shouldn't have lost them. So okay, so 36 inch thing to care of.
And I would reduce it to 820.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep.
Trim caps, you guys are okay with that?
Yeah, they covered that. It's not a difference.
And the colors, so it's kind of a?
It's a yellow, it's a, it's a printed color, it's like a gradient yellow.
Okay. You guys have any thoughts on the yellow?
No problem.
12 inches from the face of the building.
Yeah, we reduced it to a three and a half feet letter with a four and a half.
Well, I guess if we're okay with yellow, did you see, does it look like they?
Yeah, quick, quick look, it looks like it. I would just make it subject to final confirmation by administration. It looks like it's compliant.
Okay. Are there any other questions you guys get?
No, I think you would, as he suggests administrative approvals and see, can comply with all those things.
Okay, do you want to make a motion?
You're good at it.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the revised plan, including the yellow, grayed yellow logo for final confirmation of the changes administratively?
I'd second that.
Oh, oh. ATM set?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, all the favor?
Hi.
Alright. The fans are.
Yep.
Affordable dentures. Somebody here from? Whoa, Ryan, you back where you got the shine? Alright. It looks like you got revised plans to be addressed. Frank, should I go over here and comment?
Sure. Report dated November 11th. This is for unit six in Macedonia comments. And the square, or the unit frontage is 40 feet, which provides 100 square feet of sign area. And it's 2.5 square feet per lineal foot based on frontage of Macedonia Commons Boulevard. The, excuse me, the proposed amount of signage is 48.79 square feet. There's an additional two vinyl door decals and then a small blade sign and a rear entry door sign. Relative to the total amount of area proposed, no issue whatsoever, just a few questions. It looks like, based on the submittal here tonight, they're all being addressed. So the planning commission will need to act on the two blue colors for the logo. Just like the last request, you have authority to do that. The max of 12 inches projection, looks like that's taken care of. The 15 inch from the bottom of the fascia has also been taken care of on the revised plans. The black backer is just for illustrative purposes. Looks like dimension wise of the doors provided, no issue with that. And then the only last thing I didn't see was the blade sign. It looks like that, that issue's been cured as well. So would recommend approval, subject to confirmation, acceptance of the revised plans.
Okay. I'm sorry, did I forget your board? Alright, so it looks like you addressed all the comments. Anything else that you agree?
Well, maybe it's a channel on a sign individual that is on a raceway. The raceway is split into three parts. It's a very long sign, so it's split into three parts for handling and transportation.
Okay.
And maybe assembled prior to installation. Everything else is according to the Macedonia Commons sign criteria that is of the color.
You guys have any thoughts on the proof?
No, blue is, blue is the color you have.
Well, that's their logo.
Yeah, okay. I have no problem.
Any other questions? Alright, similar to the last one, I'll make a motion to approve, subject to final confirmation of the plans administratively.
I'll second.
Alright, all the favor?
Hi.
Hi. It's easy.
Next is UT. Who's next? Alright, so this new place in the, replacement of coffee place is there?
Yeah, usually be local cafe.
Yeah. Okay.
We guess maybe close down like four or five months and I guess is our chances. We doing our bubble tea and it's a new thing to the community. So I don't know.
It's pretty popular.
Yeah, it's a new generation, yeah. So far we do good on sushi restaurants, so hopefully doing as well as bubble tea.
Okay. Alright, Frank, should I go over here?
Sure, my report dated November 11th. This is for the Cipriani Building, 777 East Road. There is an approved sign criteria for that, for that plaza as well. Regarding sign area, it falls under the zoning code, section 117903F2. Provides two square feet of identification for each lineal foot of building frontage. Essentially, the applicant's just refacing the existing sign that's there. It's 40 square feet, no issue with that. The frontage allows that. So regarding area limitations, no concerns. Colors, the proposed brown that's being proposed with this application does adhere to the approved color palette for the, for the development. That was dated November 3rd, 2005 originally, amended in January 2012 and then amended again in October of 21 to include brown. So with that said, no concerns, it can be approved as submitted.
Alright, you guys. Is there any other questions on something?
I don't want.
Yeah, go ahead.
What does the Chinese, how do you translate the Chinese underneath? What does that say?
It just say UT in Chinese.
In Chinese, okay.
Yeah, they have two word.
I could have guessed that, yeah.
Yeah, because they're, let's try to bring a little bit different culture.
I get you.
Yeah.
Alright, if there's any questions, make a, make a motion to approve as submitted.
I'd second that.
Alright, all the favor?
Hi.
Hi. Alright, good luck. How long do you think until you can take over?
We tried both equipment, we got shipped from China, so it'll take a little bit longer. It's like three tons. The equipment is specially made for bubble tea. And hopefully we can open around Christmas time, later this new year.
Great, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, about jewelry. Do you guys can pull up extra seats or just one of you?
Good evening.
So I guess instead of jumping right to comments, if you guys want to give a little overview. Boy, the building looks, looks good. Hopefully you guys are happy with.
Yeah.
I love that. Don't think it was disappearing, it's kind of hard to miss.
My wife.
Yeah, if you want to just explain this.
Sure. Yeah, so what we're trying to do is, first of all, the three months that we've been there, of course, you've already had some incidents with the retention basins. One just being, I just brought these for you guys reference. We've had a dumpster already kind of fall down into that. Retention basin. So unfortunately, the property in front of us does not have a full curb around the property. So that offers this challenge of basically kind of a safety hazard. So as, as you guys know, we obviously have probably one of the most unique glots in all of Macedonia.
Yeah.
Without, without saying, so obviously we would like to solve this, a safety issue. That's kind of number one. We haven't had any snow yet. So obviously, the odds of ice and snow back there are very high. So I could see maybe a vehicle hanging in that without having a full curb around there. So that is why we originally want the fence. Obviously, there are other issues as far as just debris and a lot of debris and trash from the plaza in front of us as well. So we've already too stopped people from parking and trying to walk across. People, and that's the only thing. We put bushes there.
Years, yeah.
Yeah.
Because.
We've had signs up to St. Olm, but we've also had a lot of help people as they start into the grass. But you want to be responsible for starting to fall in back there.
Going.
And as far as how things came through trees and bushes, we've already put some arbivitae there and it's like they just walk through. And people don't realize also, yeah, we're not like a grocery store. Obviously, we're a jewelry store. So there's a little bit bigger target on our back versus a grocery store and this or that. Knowing who's in our building, who's in our parking lot, it's, it means a little bit more to us than the average storefront is. So we did obviously receive the notes and comments and, you know, we appreciate those, obviously. But at the same time, I think understanding the need and why kind of goes a long way as well.
Should I go over there?
Sure, I can. And I, I did go over and visit the site. And so there's definitely, there's definitely challenges there with regard to the aesthetics from the neighboring properties.
Yeah, absolutely.
I fully understand why you want to put up some screening. So, you know, it is in the, the site is located in the town center district, but so was the adjacent site, in fairness. You are allowed to have some fencing by code. The only real technical issue is it can't break or go in front of the front face of the building. But that could be easily scaled back to the point of the, of that front corner of the building where you have the, the window kind of glazed with now, now open, I think is what it is. Kind of that corner toward the side street is where you could carry the fence. Can't break that front face. You know, ideally, board on board fence isn't what I would say is what would comply or be what the city would desire for the town center district. But I also look at the existing fencing that's there behind some of the other businesses. And then I look at the challenges you have. And again, I can understand why you'd want to have it. What I don't fully understand is with the site plan, where were you planning on running that fence? Because of the way that, that ditch is, that swale that's in there, were you putting it on the top end? Along your property right there?
Yeah, so we own all the way to the asphalt there. So, yeah, it would be on that top edge there. And then I kind of, just out of curiosity, as far as, you know, breaking the front of our building as a challenge. I guess I talked with Mr. Rodeck and it kind of seemed like we had the idea that the planning commission was able to approve something like this in this district that wasn't held to maybe a specific code.
I don't think the commission can approve going in, in front of the front face of the building. So I think from that point toward the, the side street, they can approve the fencing. I don't think they can do it in front of the building. I think it would have to probably go to the Portisoni appeals at that point. And I, and I don't know what, again, I do recognize and clearly see the issues, but I, I don't know what going in front of that point of the, maybe you can explain that, but what that does for you visually. Because it seems to me, your, your window at that corner is, if you're looking out that window, you would be to see the kind of the, that not so attractiveness. You'd be looking back to the east, right?
Yes.
And so that front, breaking that front window or the front part of the building, I'm not sure what that does for you with, with the fencing up there.
So that's kind of where the safety issue lies in and of itself is from basically the.
Our front door.
Yeah, basically from our front door all the way, that would be us.
East, right?
Yes. East to the start of where I guess that would be the vitamin shop. It's on my corner. So as far as fencing itself along Route 8, we, I think we have no requests as far as that. It would just be starting basically at that creek. So we're, we have electrical boxes.
Yeah, back culvert.
And the back of their current dumpster.
Was it more of a visual thing?
Well, yeah, so I mean, I just wanted, I guess this would be just one unison fence instead of having all these choppy.
Well, I guess, say, why, why does it need to go this section of it? Because this is where you're saying needs to, my coding needs to stop.
Oh, so I was under, I was understanding that our frontage is this way.
Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying on the Route 8 frontage, that's why I'm, I think we're confused. Because your door is.
You're saying this piece?
Yeah, mhm. That piece is the piece that you need to pull that back.
You're saying this can't stick out there and have to stop at the corner of the building?
That's absolutely true. No issue with that.
Okay, okay, that's why we were having trouble like this.
Yeah.
You were, you were thinking they were saying.
I was thinking the frontage from our front door forward, I guess.
I was just saying the front being the face.
The driveway, that's what we're figuring, is frontage is where the driveway is.
I was thinking of man. I think it, I think it went all the way around.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a can't, the culvert's a thing.
Same, they aren't.
Yeah. Although we, they're the birds there now, but we're probably not involved because people are still coming really.
Who's? So just some general things for, just so maybe the administration can understand too. So you have their, their dumpster, which kind of sits up near your Route 8 frontage portion of the building.
That's this picture here? Yes. I have a question, am I too late? Yes. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and.
Tell me what you're talking about.
And then that swale in between your buildings and that non-curved edge of their asphalt. You go up to that non-curved edge of their asphalt?
Yes.
Right up to that line?
Yes.
So I think if I remember, that was supposed to be phase one or whatever. Your property was going to be a different phase and I thought it was going to like butt up to that and that's why they didn't curve in that, maybe? Was that?
Yeah, I don't.
Sense? So I kind of thought this, you know, this is the first half, visual, you know, is conceptual when they brought that in, had another building back here that was going to be a shared driveway. They were going to park it or something off of that.
Okay, I do seem to remember.
And then you guys obviously bought it.
Yeah, and so, and you're proposing, so I'm just looking at like this pictures I just have on my phone. I don't know if you could see that or not.
Yeah.
So that, that, that asphalt line right there.
Correct.
Which is to the south of your arbiviti, that's your property line, you're saying?
Yes.
And you're not able to put the fence on that line or is that where you're proposing?
That's where I'm proposing.
Okay, that, that seems like that would be the most appropriate location.
Correct.
So I was a little confused. I thought you were trying to put it on the slope side.
Right, right up on the asphalt, on the, on the west side, the south side asphalt edge.
Yeah. And I'm not sure, you know, I think the, the city likely is, you know, looking at that probably, you know, because there, there's some, there's some property maintenance issues on the back of that building. It's separate from the commission, but I'm sure they're looking at that and.
I mean, and then I kind of just, as far as that goes, I mean, just water runoff. I mean, even when we're in construction, the water runoff off the back of that property. All of his dump spots hit that back, back edge and just.
Drake.
But the overflows just flow right down the river. So that's kind of a separate issue as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they, the site should be designed to handle their own water.
Exactly.
So I'm not sure, without the, you know, the privilege of having those plans in front of me now, I don't know why they wouldn't hold their own water. And then that basin then that goes down toward the front, toward the side street. Is that your basin or is it a joint, combined basin?
That would be their basin. You're saying on the, that would be the Route 8's?
No, on the, more toward like the 82.
Or the, the one you showed in the picture? So you showed the picture, your pictures?
Yeah, there's a, on your plan, there shows a proposed, proposed stormwater basin, which is in this image toward the First National Bank side.
So that's our basin?
Okay. And there's a lot of debris and junk in that?
Yes.
And that's coming from the other?
The, the, yeah. That's why we want the fence.
Yeah.
The landscapers spend time and they're fishing it all out. It's not our trash. Put something down on the ground and nothing can come through and they can look at it, not outside the paper.
Are you concerned at all about crap drivers, you know, back there behind it and getting this fence? I mean, they're worried about the asphalt and some truck delivery comes. I assume that's where the deliveries come down there.
Right, and there's, there, there can be issues, but at a point that's, they've got to pay attention to what's going on. And at some point, can we work at having him put a curb up or that's going to help the whole situation? So. Yeah. Especially that's the water retention of the property that it's on and staying on the property it's on, so. But I mean, if it keeps one car out of the basin, you know, it's. And the pizza button across. My comments were just about how this is being maintained or lack of being maintained. That something can be enforced.
Okay.
I mean, even if you guys did build theirs, residential beyond that, I wouldn't want to look at that. And I'm looking at, you know, shelves here with five gallon buckets and do we, do we approve trash enclosures with wood fences?
Some of them, I'm not sure.
And then, and it looks like some have a cart trash can sit next to it.
I actually feel like it was a little better than it did a little while. When I drove back there, I'm like, still looks bad, but I feel like it was maybe a little worse before. So I don't know, somebody said something to me. But, you know, it's still that, that great.
Yeah, I just think they've gotten complacent because they haven't had anybody there. Now you're there and it's being noticed and so.
I ask a question, Kevin. Are, are you fixed on that board fence? You, you saw our architect person, what, have you talked to her or?
Yeah, I actually, yeah, it's Pam, I believe.
Pam?
Yeah, I got to talk to Pam when she was out there. And I, I understand some of the things that she sends as far as, you know, natural, but I don't think a natural fence is going to solve any of these issues.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, none of the natural fences I think is going to solve any of the issues. One of the other fences that she proposed, look, I hate to say quite elaborate, I mean, we're talking, that, that seems like quite a, quite a lot of, a ton of brick. I mean, I know how much brick the building costs and. That would be beautiful. It would, it would be very, very beautiful. The other one that she put is, I understand that and I think that would, that would be nice, but yet again, it's pretty see-through, right? So if we were on the Route 8 side, I would love to go ahead and put that black component fence.
Mhm.
You know, she proposed it on that Route 8 side, maybe one day that would be. fence, you know, she proposed it on that Route 8 side, maybe one day that would be...
Well, if you were to put a board fence, could you put Arbivide in front of it, like I think, and plantings in front of it or something?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Possibly to hide the fence?
Yeah.
It's sort of an ugly fence, I see here, the board fence.
Yeah, yeah. As long as it's dark somewhere.
Well, I see some growing, yeah, it'll take a while.
They actually need to add a few more, we can't, to a point when the trenches start to fill and the reservoirs are filling, and that water level goes up and down three feet already, we've seen, so.
Do you know the one that's the, the guy there with like the parking spaces and all that, that was in the packet? I have it on screen, but I've been trying to figure, this one here. I'm just trying to understand exactly where you're proposing starting the fence in any event.
Sure.
So this is, this is Fairlane Drive here. So we'd be starting the fence, which I have no problem with at the corner of this building, we adjust that, so that's basically, this is their electrical boxes, running through their dumpster all the way down and then finishing at basically where our reservoir ends. And I understand you made some rationale for that, but what I'm trying to understand is where their building ends here, because the only answer I have, seeing that fence from that 82, because there's that piece of parking lot of theirs before, I think the building kind of starts someplace over here, or? This is the comments that... Get one that's built there. So this would line up. Similarly to this, so their building probably ends about here-ish, but their curb is probably still fifteen to twenty feet, I would say. I'd say fifteen to twenty feet from where their curb ends and where the building begins. And actually, that is the steepest part, it's about right there. It's almost exactly where that dumpster's at.
Yeah, their curb ends at the corner.
It ends at the culvert, it's not a triple closure, so yeah, but it's basically where that dumpster is. Yeah. It's not wheels, so they wheel them out every morning and it just, going, going, going. Too much motion. So, yeah, you can kind of see from this picture, kind of give you a better idea. So here's their curb, so they, the building ends like right there, so you got that much for it.
But some of it would be hidden from the dumpster enclosure though, too.
Oh, you're talking on the other end, though?
Yeah.
You're on the, you're on the west end.
Someone else have questions?
Curious if you'd be interested in maybe kind of going halfway between the board-on-board and, you know, what Pam was suggesting, maybe doing a vinyl or a PVC fence product that would maybe last a little bit longer, would still look like wood, but, I mean, I pulled up, you know, you wouldn't have to have this detail, but this is the product, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I know one product that was used, kind of over by the bowling alley, I think that was a vinyl.
Was it a, how was it vinyl?
Between the residential and the bowling alley.
Yeah.
What about, you know, we have a concern about these fences and wind. Doesn't there have to be a certain percentage of airflow through the fence?
Sixty-six percent, I think, is what the code says. I think, I'm assuming you're doing like a board-on-board fence?
Correct.
Yeah, so are you, is it custom, or are you, you're not buying it from like Home Depot?
No, I mean, we'd hire professional fences, especially being right on the property line, we want to make sure that's on our property, obviously.
Yeah, so you, I mean, you just need to make it, I'm assuming then they're going to make it custom, and so it has to adhere to that sixty-six percent, I think is the percentage in the code for airflow. And then, I'm assuming you're, are you painting it, are you staining it, what are you doing for color-wise?
We're pretty open as far as that, you know.
In some instance, I mean, I think the wood fence is probably better than vinyl unless you do like a high-grade commercial vinyl, because, you know, if they're just pulling vinyl fencing, again, out of like a Lowe's or something, that stuff's pretty chintzy.
Oh, no, I would suggest like something like, I mean, there are better products on the market than what, you know, Lowe's sells off the shelf, so.
Moving out here.
You know, insofar as front yard, side yard and all that, and there was some confusion about that, you know, even if this were considered a corner lot, the owner actually can designate the front yard frontage. So in this instance, they could say that the cul-de-sac on the residential street is their front yard frontage. They certainly wouldn't want to put theirself at a limitation by designating one that would go against them. And this doesn't even feel like a corner lot, it feels more like a double frontage lot than a corner lot.
So how's that affect?
I think it's okay to do it as long as they stay out of that front yard setback, which it looks like that's what's proposed. It's hard to tell on the site plan.
Yeah.
But where you call finish, I don't know what that...
So that's, and that's, I guess, why I was confused as well. So finishing would be, that would be on the Fairlane side. Starting would be that corner, how you proposed on Route 8, so I have no problem stopping at that corner.
Sure, you won't break, you won't break that corner, that southwest corner of the building face. And then, again, just, it's really hard to tell on this, on this plan, but where it says proposed stormwater basin, you see a dash line?
Correct.
And that dash line's a north-south line. What's that, what's that say, what's the font say there? I don't know if that's the front yard setback, or if that's the front yard building setback, you'll have to stop at that point, so you'd have to pull it in a little bit and stop it at that front setback there, or if that's the building setback, again, I had laser correction surgery, but I can't tell what that says.
That is, that is a worry, that's what that is, yes.
So if that's the front building setback, you got to pull the fence to that line at a minimum. So you could start at that line, go in towards your building.
Okay.
You can't go toward Fairlane more.
Correct.
So you'd have a little adjustment there, not a lot, if that's what that says.
Probably, you know, it was pretty equal, we had to pull on the channel.
Sure.
And then are you proposing, sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I can, are you proposing the decorative caps on the fence? What, like in your, I think this is like the example you were showing.
Yeah, that was my example.
I think the decorative caps would be helpful.
You like the decorative caps?
Well, yeah, it's better than just a, like a dog ear top at the posts.
Absolutely fine for that, yeah. As far as, like we said, color and, you know, small little details like this, very open. Any suggestions?
If you approve fence, would you have the color approval? That could maybe be an administrative thing, or whatever, color, stain, or something like that. I think probably something, I'd love to think protective-wise, I mean, it's...
Yeah, I would not, I would do some sort of color stain or something, because that'll just get, you know, yeah, just not very attractive over time, which is not beneficial to you anyhow, so you want to make it nice.
We want, yeah, we want a nice clean look.
Yeah.
So you're leaning towards, you think it would be okay to do the fence more or less as they propose, shorten it up a little bit, put it where they want to put, there's nothing, they don't have to be setback off the line, property line at all?
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think so in the commercial, in the commercial issue, and I don't know how they would do it anyhow, but I don't think so in the non-residential district.
I just hope it doesn't get constantly whacked, knocked out by a delivery truck coming through there, but I guess that's a maintenance issue you guys are going to have to deal with, you know, if a car does, if it stops a car from going into the fade, you're going to have a pretty screwed up couple sections of fence.
Correct.
Yeah, the truck.
Well, plenty of, plenty of fences are built on the slope side, so, I mean, you could take it down a little bit off of that edge into the slope, you could do that. And actually, your installer may be forced to do that, because depending on what was left over from the driveway installation, there may be aggregate material that they hit that's just too difficult to get it in. So you may be forced to put it down on the slope afoot, let's say.
Or if they need to work and your neighbor's not being real friendly and doesn't want you standing on his driveway while they're putting it in. I guess, yeah, if you decide to do something like that, something like that, I think it'd be administrative, if you want to change it when you get your permit or something like that. But if you're okay, if you're thinking it's okay, we could probably approve it with the short...
Let me ask one more, I understand they're going to put caps on it to make it look a little better. I didn't hear at all, is it going to be stained though? Not that bright yellow?
No.
Right. Something a little more blended.
Okay.
Yeah, if we let them, you know, like administrative review of the color, you know, just bring a sample or something, are you guys okay with that? So I think we should probably mention administrative review of the color, shortening the lengths of the... Make a motion to approve the fence with the following conditions, the west end is cut back to the front southwest corner of the building. And then the east end should be cut back to the building setback. Include decorative caps on the posts themselves. Color to be approved administratively. That's it, that's my motion, third second.
I'll second that.
More discussion with Francis, are we good?
Oh, I think I heard you say that the fence has to comply with section 1171-16 of the Planted Code, and specifically 1171-16G, which sets for general conditions for fencing.
Did you catch that, when I said that? Good. All right, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
STG Electric.
You just had?
Just had.
He was allowed to be out?
I was just thinking.
How are you supposed to be here?
I'm not drunk, I'm in, like, I'm in the trunk, I'm out of your brain. So, just go ahead and go over, because you're named Kurt Westover, STG Electric. I'm Todd Westover, ORX Solutions. STG, yeah.
I was just lucky.
Yeah, it's easy to tell, pick the gaps, I have a handrail, you go pick me up. So I guess there's a couple things going on here. I got a, you know, we've been in connection to have that curb cut there, and we did comments from planning and also I think the city engineer. And, you know, moving that curb across from hotel, we have no issue with that, because in reality, what we want to do is Mars Electric is behind us, and they probably get four or five trucks a day from Mars Electric, but when they move into the building, we'll have to come out onto Highland Road, just to get in, make that double turn, which is your biggest contingency concern there. So this allows them to kind of come straight in and then they can really go back out to their own building.
So Mars would be moving into business?
No, no, Mars is down the, Mars is down the couple of doors.
So this is a new business that's going into the business system?
Yeah, it was Chicago Title, was it? Was it Chicago Title, and STG Electric is moving in? One of their main suppliers is Mars Electric, down the road. So that's why it was at the Enlor lot, because it's just convenient, but if you'd like, and I perfectly understand that you want to line it up across from the hotel, from that, you know, everybody lines up, you're not turning across there, that really is no issue to us. In this process, I got a phone call from Mr. Hall, Chris Hall, about, what's a better word, an unapproved zoning, or occupancy issue there, that it was never approved for office use, even though it's been like that for twenty-seven years. And he has been addressed this complaint with this committee.
Neither Chris nor Bob are here, so I don't think anybody on this panel can speak about it.
We have to, I said, well, you know, it's a, it's a general industrial design of their area, that's what you call it, general industrial.
Yeah. It looks like it's limited industrial. About the property you're representing?
Yeah, I always wondered why the title company was moving back.
Limited industrial.
Well, it was originally, we heard that it was originally in Time Warner built from the facility.
So they were back in the trucks.
They were back, yeah, lots of paper product and...
It was back.
So, when I got this call a little bit last week, he said that we'd have to bring an application before this committee for conditional use, even though, he said it's really been used that way for twenty years.
Yeah.
Which we can, and I think the deadline for the next meeting is this Wednesday to submit, so, the reason that I did list my document here tonight is that, you know, as such, I just want to kind of talk this through so that we come back in December with whatever issues that you might have with the apron and also this conditional use paperwork matter, if I have a better word.
Excuse me, who told you that? Who was the one that said?
Chris Hall, the zoning inspector. Chris Hall, zoning.
Oh, I see.
Evidently, the bank, because they're going to buy the building from ICC owns it right now, STG's going to buy the building, not just lease it to them.
Oh, I see, okay, I didn't know who told you.
So when they went through their title work, they approached the city for, you know, zoning, you know, certificate of zoning, all that and stuff, and Chris went back and said, "Uh, uh, probably I can't sign off on zoning, that this is a permitted use. It's conditionally permitted, it's allowed, and, because we're a business and an industrial use." He said, "So it's a permitted use, which requires the board to..." Paperwork and...
Don't be pointing at the substance of it, we have to have that smell before we can do it tonight.
Well, we're not asking you to approve this tonight, thought it would be better maybe just to talk this through and come back in December. If we can hold off on the curb cut, because I, and I know that you had some comments a little bit, it was your obvious...
Yeah, they're minor technical, so let me just ask some questions if I can. So who are you?
I'm the architect.
You're the what?
Architect.
You're the architect?
I work for STG Electric.
And that's who occupies the building?
ICC occupies the building.
Who's ICC?
Owns the building, we are buying it.
Okay, you're buying it.
STG's own and occupy.
STG is?
Yes.
And what do you do?
We're a whole company, residential, commercial...
Do you sell products?
No, we're, we're electrical service.
Oh, you're like contractor?
Subcontractor, subcontractor.
Subcontractor.
We occupy the buildings right behind it. We're just moving into the other building.
You're going to move into the frontage building on Highland, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Yes, okay. In your business, you're a, you're a subcontractor? Yes, okay. In your business, you're a, you're a subcontractor and inside this space, how big's the space?
Twenty-five thousand square feet.
And of that twenty-five thousand square feet, what happens in the building?
Uh, office.
How much office?
Probably seventy-five percent of it.
Seventy-five percent is the office and twenty-five percent is products, warehouses, and you take those out and do jobs at customer sites.
Yeah, you, you get a spool of wire or anything, a spool of wire back out. So that's why we get the leverage from the level supply houses. Right, right now, we, in our current facility, we don't have a large enough space to have a, a team meeting of our fifty-plus employees. So we have to do it in our warehouse, so we're planning on a two thousand square foot conference room, you know, it's, we, we occupy three different parts of the building we're in right now, three different tent spaces. So we wanted to move into the building, it's twenty-five thousand square foot, bring them together and then run top of the other spaces that we own. We want to build and we want to run those spaces out to other businesses.
And you, you represent the company? You're not manufacturing use? You're not a storage use? Are you a distribution use? And a wholesaling facility?
I thought you were just pulling this out of your head.
He is. He's pretty good.
Kind of like you're on the top of the. Does it go around the top of the head?
Sounds like you're gonna get a conditional zoning certificate. It's an interesting dilemma, to be truthful, within the code. Like, you would want to encourage straight offices, right? With accessory other things that fall within the limited industrial district. That's not how it's written, so. We'll see him in December.
Does that require public hearing?
Well, yeah, I guess. I mean, that's what, that's what Mr. Hall determined is it's conditional use. It falls under a retail business that's determined by the planning commission to be compatible with other uses in the district, which is conditionally permissible. I, on its face, can't figure any reason why we wouldn't want to have office employees in the building. So it'll, it'll need to come to the commission as a conditional zoning certificate. You can take up these other issues and again, yeah, it's probably smart talking through them tonight. The width of the apron, I know the city engineer has a concern with the one driveway, so those are things to talk about tonight and you can just delay all actions until next month.
Yeah, we know that, we know that's gonna go up to ninety, you know, your comments. Because it was kind of like, well, you're here for this, you're here for that, and it was like, we'll just, you know, hit his boss, my, my comment. So to table it, it's like, well, let's just go and talk to them and kind of come back in December, because it's not gonna hurt us from a time standpoint to get our approval in December, so.
Because implementation is until the spring.
Can I ask?
Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, they're pulling it out, you're likely to occupy, you know.
January and then implementation of the, the technical things that you're asking for is later? Like the new apron and such?
Well, they would do it once we got approvals. I, I mean, those trucks sit out there a long time, that's the intersection of Capitol and Highland. And just to make a double, double right turn and then try to make a double left turn going back to Mars is even worse. So this is going to only be.
It's a fair may. So you're saying there's a fair amount of traffic back and forth between the building that you hope to occupy and the Mars Electric building?
Absolutely.
And that's the reason why you're asking for this curb cut tonight? That answers one of my questions. Thank you. I was wondering why you need this.
The purpose was.
The purpose, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a.
Makes sense.
And likewise, it's better for our own, you know, the guys who need the shop to go out there and get on the road instead of, that's a terrible intersection to try to.
I agree.
Yeah, assuming you get your permit and come back to us, I just want to know, Mr. France had the suggestion of the curb cut being lined up with the neighbor.
Yeah.
There's no problem with that. So when you finally come back to us, I suppose we'll be tabling this, won't we?
Yes, but we have no issue with that. I mean, it actually gets closer to our, we just put it at, oh, at the end because we worked again, the purchase pass out, but it doesn't really matter. It's two hundred. It's not like we're retail or we need all those.
Sort of formally ask in front of Mr. France, is there anything they need to provide in terms of the conditional zone?
Mr. Hall sent us an application.
Yeah, he says, I guess, fill in the application, formally requesting that, is there any information you need to give recommendation?
Yeah, this, this whole dialogue about purpose, that would be helpful. What's the purpose of this project as it relates to the occupancy? Seventy-five percent office in a roughly twenty-five thousand square foot building, that's eighteen seven fifty for parking purposes. We have this many employees, the code requires this. Those are all things now that it's all, it's all making more sense. Yeah, narrative would be good and then, you know, I was just quickly doing the, I'm assuming, because I said in my memo, I didn't think a couple of spaces were gonna be a big deal, but I didn't realize it was a, a new occupancy, so. I'm assuming you guys looked at the, the parking standards?
What's there accommodates our fifty employees. I don't, I don't know that if we are above or below the required count, but it serves our needs.
We should make sure that before you know it, three or four spaces.
Again, the uses. Yeah, so how many parking spaces are there total?
Honestly, I didn't.
Do you know how much frontage you have on, on Highland? Building frontage.
It's on the plan, I think, on the, if you could pull up that.
Maybe on the bigger plan.
Yeah, it's on the.
It was for Highland front?
Yeah.
Yeah. I got the GAS open, so I'll measure. That's pretty close, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, no, that's, that's pretty accurate.
So. Roughly, I mean, if I take the property line from here to here, do you know, this peg, this peg, three hundred and twenty-two feet roughly?
Close to two hundred.
Okay. Okay, so, so in that case, one for two fifty.
I mean, it's.
This is back of the napkin, like, really quick. We'll run the full analysis once you submit. But.
It's way over here. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there's way more than we need. We're just kind of old for companies here. At least a hundred parking spots. Mr. France, looking at the title work here, from the pin that is kind of at a corner here to the pin that is in the center of Capitol Boulevard, it measures three hundred and twenty-two, so minus twenty-five footer right away from that pin, we're about three hundred feet.
Yeah, building frontage, not parcel frontage. Yeah, so that's okay. It's like two hundred feet of frontage, so. Yeah, so you, we'll have to look at your, when it's a hundred feet of frontage or more. Offices go at one space for two hundred fifty square feet of floor area, so you're gonna want to, as the architect, go into eleven seventy-one eleven of the code and look at your actual building square footage, and there's calculations in here for what offices are. It sounds like you have more than a hundred feet of building frontage.
Correct.
And so then you'll need to break down the building by office use and then how much is storage and then you can take out or subtract out. Mechanicals up to twenty percent. So you'll look at that and then you'll tell us how many spaces you have, how many, and we'll confirm that information. How many you're supposed to have and then we'll be able to make an educated determination if taking out a couple of spaces is not an issue. May or may not be, I don't know, without having some metrics in front of me.
First of all, I don't see it being an issue. But yeah, so I mean, to me, I think Mr. Hall was kind of like, we just need to kind of do this and make it official. So that, it doesn't, it doesn't happen the next time, because it, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't approved for Chicago Title being there either, you know, for the last twenty years. So just go through the process.
Yeah, Chris did the right thing. He, you know, in this instance, it's, you have to occupy the structure. To occupy, you have a use. Well, does that use fit into the code? And he's trying to make it fit, which I understand, and I think that's about the only way we can do it, is through a conditional zoning certificate. The narrative, that information, the parking, all of that will be helpful. And then there's these technical issues that the engineer and I raised that the commission.
So if you want to talk about those technical issues?
Go ahead, if you're jumping in.
And so, so there's the issue of aligning it.
No problem.
No problem, so we'll just look at parking and then the width of the apron.
That was proposed in twenty-four feet.
So the, so the, it's the maximum width is thirty-six feet at the property line.
Just need the driveway to run out.
With the width, yeah. Oh, with the width? Yeah, code is thirty-six, right?
Yeah, you asked for concrete, no problem.
Yeah, it should be a concrete apron.
No problem. Uh, I think you're, you like your, it's six inches and you're.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I think it's a six inch, uh, concrete curb or commercial?
Uh, I'm sure it did, yeah. I'm sure it does.
Or concrete apron. No, that's all.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I really had two questions for you guys. One was the purpose. You already answered that. Makes perfect sense. Thank you. My second concern was the apron that accesses on Highland Road in the northwest corner of your property. It's the apron that is basically touching Capitol Boulevard. Do you need that apron? Can we get rid of that apron?
No, we'd like to have that. That's still our front door.
Okay. The reason I ask is it does complicate things. It's a heavy traffic area. The more access points we have on Highland Road, the more difficult all, everyone's traffic maneuvers become. There's always the risk for an accident. Kevin, I apologize, I'm stepping on your toes here. I know this is your day job, but. There's five lanes of traffic at that location.
Okay.
There's five lanes of traffic on Highland Road at that spot. And then by granting the, the new curb cut you're asking for, which I'm all in favor of getting cars over to Capitol Boulevard, you would wind up with three access points on your property, which I haven't really reviewed the code that closely. I'm not even sure it's allowed.
Mr. Hall said it was allowed because Capitol Boulevard is not a.
It's a public road.
It's its drive.
It's a public road. I know you had mentioned that as well, but.
Yeah, it's not a public highway.
Well, I guess, what's the definition of a highway? My, my definition of a highway, of a public highway is any public road that anybody's free to drive up and down at any time. The code doesn't make a difference between a highway and a side street or cul-de-sac. You know what I'm saying? So your chairman's not in the said yes as well.
The cul-de-sac. Yeah, isn't it a dead end? I wouldn't call it a highway.
Yeah, I understand that, but I guess what's the definition of a highway? The code doesn't give one. It's not that I could find. My definition always, and you chime in, chairman, if you feel otherwise, but highway is, is any public road that people can drive up and down. It doesn't necessarily have to be I-271, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Yeah. It, it really would be nice to get rid of the curb cut out there.
Out of the front door. Is the other, the other driveway, is that supposed to be a poupe only? Is that?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that too. There is that third driveway that's in the northeast corner of the parcel. What's the, the need or the use for that in the future?
I mean, it's just, honestly, I mean, I believe that it's a lot, when we leave the property, it is easier for us to go to that driveway and make our turn.
When you're leaving, whether you're going left or right?
Well, obviously, right's easier.
Sure.
And to that point, we don't have any issues with, you know, some signage that says, you know, exit only, no right turns or whatever kind of thing, if that's what you want to see there. At, at, at the current drive close to Capitol. Making your, one of your comments was.
It's right in, right out possibility, I think.
Yeah.
You know, the signage standpoint.
We're making it right in, right out. Helps the situation, certainly.
But I mean, it is our front door and to, to go on the other side to make that, you know, it's kind of like a whole way around the building to get to our front door, it, it's less than ideal.
Yeah, I hear you.
Obviously, if we were, you know, and Kevin knows this, if this was a brand new build, it would be like, we're closing.
Yeah, yeah, if it's a brand new build, yeah, there'd be no.
We're in trouble that we have.
It would never be allowed. Chairman, what do you think if it was a right in, right out?
I think that would probably be an improvement.
I agree, it would be an improvement, yes.
I don't know if fire has any opinion on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Rich, you were about to say something before.
No, my, my question was about the, what the, oh, the building stuff that we settled, occupancy wise, had to be settled before change of ownership.
Yeah, I bet, I don't know.
I believe so.
I guess.
Which is the reason that this all got brought up is they.
Maybe they would probably.
Title company called, you got it, called Macedonia, said we'd like just to confirm, because they're underwriting it, or something like that, that this is an approved use. So at the very least, we're coming back for it in December to ask for that conditional use. And if we can kind of work the details on the, the apron request, then we'll do it both at a time, or we hear back in December for the conditional use regardless.
Yeah, I guess the answer to the question would be, not for us to enforce, but they probably want to make sure they get it squared away.
Ours is just the minimum west distance for our trucks, and it's already present.
Okay.
So amount of driveways and aprons they have, doesn't matter to us, there's more trucks we can get in when the concrete catches on.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yes, maybe you consider.
Yeah, so, yeah, go ahead.
Right in, right out. I think at that, that.
Well, if we were to make it a right in and right out, we'd probably want more than signage. We'd probably want the island in the middle, wouldn't you think so, chairman?
I would think so, yeah.
Otherwise, people are still gonna do it all day.
Yes, if you're having somebody build this driveway, this, the, the new one, maybe they could pour, you know, pour an island, but you'd probably have to sketch something up, put something on the plan. For Joe to take a look at it. But I think, yeah, if it was gonna be right in, right out, signs.
I, I mean, I don't know if there's really, I mean, they put some sort of concrete in there, but I mean, it's, I think the driveway is only like twenty-two feet wide now as it is for the apron. And I think to.
It could be difficult. I guess that's maybe that's something to look at if you, if you can. No, maybe, maybe just enough to restrict the lefts out, you know, one left, lefts in, it's not the other world that's.
Yeah, left, left, well, yeah, let's think about that. So left out. Boy, yeah, left out is really difficult. Left in, I guess, if somebody was trying to make a left in, they would get in the, the two-way left turn lane and then it just kind of turns into a strike-off area, transverse. And I guess the, the driver could just kind of sit.
Yeah, I mean, we'll take a look at that. It may not be much, I mean, somebody's going to drive, nobody's going to, it's going to be more of a visual thing for the drivers than anything else.
Yeah.
It amounts to a speed bump with that kind of size.
And, and, and you, I mean, you can still probably pretty easily do this, but at least we're trying to, and it's mostly going to be your guys who may or may not, you know, trying to exit there, they're probably.
Well, they're, they're trainable and can mandate that from a safety standpoint for the company, like, you know, I see you guys making more left turn out there.
You're in trouble, yeah.
Yeah.
Look and see if you can do something like that, really strongly encourage it, I think. But I think the drive, the other driveway, I think somebody has a problem with.
Yeah, the drive on Capitol, that's great, I'm all for it. If that's what you're asking, chairman.
Yeah. Is there anything else needs, any other thing you guys need to hear?
No, appreciate your time.
Yeah, I guess, narrative as soon as you can.
I can come to Congress tonight and let's get out in the morning, write a report and then send it in.
Have somebody read it after, because you may be, you're on.
Take a look, ask the Congress.
It may not make size. Tony, anything else?
Go ahead, you, you.
Make a motion to, what was your, it's not, continue?
Continue.
Continue. Continue the, this application until the December meeting to deal with the conditional zoning certificate and the driveway details.
All right. I'll second that.
Mr. France?
Yeah, and I think I heard you say to address the technical issues and requirements in the code, as well as providing a single legible plan to scale.
Single, what do you want, you want it to size or what?
Yeah, this one, like, doesn't have any dimensions on it, it's difficult to scale, this one I can't read, so like combining them together into one legible, large plan would be good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, gentlemen, I have to talk to Brandon tomorrow.
He did a call from the.
It's all me.
From mayor?
Uh, I'll talk to Brandon tomorrow.
He said you're running. I am too.
Nevermind. He's on the plan.
Oh. Asking.
Oh, you want to know what happened tonight?
No, no, I, another issue.
I thought we had to vote.
All right, pick the minutes to adjourn. I'll second.
Sign this.